Welcome. Tonight, Donna Whitley, treasure collector, about tax liens.
Actually, it's tax possessions.
Oh, well, it says liens here.
That's what Donna said to me.
So, let's get the right terminology.
No. It's tax possessions.
Alright, so there's something about taxes.
Right, it's the properties that were in tax title that we now foreclose them. And, so the town has possession of them, we have deeds. And according to House General Law, Chapter 60, 77B, it says that the mayor or selectman of any town which holds property acquired by foreclosure of tax titles shall appoint a custodian who shall have the care, custody, custody, management, and control of our property so far as said city or town. And so I'm asking that the select board appoint me custodian so that I can sell the property that we have in the town.
Normally, this is done through you.
Well, I think in the past, like Diana did the last time we had those properties.
I think she did the last time.
These are due to.
Well, if she did it, then it's Diana.
Well, then she did the ones before Diana, because I know there was several hundred thousand dollars that Ed Ban shelter was chasing for.
So, I've already talked to someone about the properties that we have that really have not much value to them, they're landlocked. We can just do an advertisement, and the attorney who handles my tax bills is going to help me put together an advertisement, we can do sealed bids, which would be the quickest and fastest way to get rid of them, because they're really only going to be valuable to people who are abutters, right?
Are there any wood lots?
Wood lots?
Yeah, wood lots. People buy wood lots to cut wood into.
Is that the question?
Yeah.
Could I say?
So, we own that property on Mill Road. It is potentially a building lot that I would like to see if we could get a backhoe for half of the day, and I already talked to the Board of Health, and do some perks, because if we can get a perk.
More valuable.
Then it will be more valuable, then we can auction that one off, as opposed to, you know, try to just do a sealed bid.
Or bounces, that look at it.
If you go White Oak and take a left, it's before the first houses on the right zone. It kind of goes up.
It's on the east side of the street. East side of the street. Take a right, take a left, and it'll be on the right side of the street.
So, is this one person or more than one piece of property?
Yeah, but the second property that that person owned is in the middle of a huge piece of property. And it's, I mean, I don't know that you could even, you could probably locate it with GPS or, you know. So, I think there's only one abutter, and his land surrounds it.
How much acreage is involved?
Oh, which one?
The one that's surrounded.
Uh, not much. It's only like the taxes, or like technology or something.
Oh.
Small. So, yeah, I don't know what we're going to do with that one.
It's not even worth the posted stamp.
No, but we have to get it, we either have to get that person to buy it, or not, or, you know, it's not a lot of money, just so we can get it off of our books, having a corporate. It's not like they don't need it. You know what I mean? It's out in the middle of woods.
But we still have to go through a procedure on how you post it and how you sell it. Am I right?
Right, we still have to do sealed bid, but we can, you know, we can obviously send notices to all the abutters, and.
You have to advertise for 45 days?
I'm not sure as well.
And tumble too much. There's a process to it.
Yeah, I don't have to go on a legal notice. I don't know what the other, that's why.
Okay. I'll leave that up to you, how you do it. You say, I'll leave that up to you on how you do it.
Didn't we used to have like one of the attorneys involved?
At one point, years ago, Claire was involved with Chrissy, chasing back taxes. That was a long time ago.
Yeah.
And that was under John Krevier and Ed Ban shelter. To the logic.
So, you feel pretty confident that that's the route you should go?
Well, for the ones.
I think that's the only way we can go, right?
For the ones that don't have a lot of value, a lot of value, or are landlocked. I mean, I'm not saying they're not valuable at all, but they're, that are only valuable to the abutters, I think that.
Okay.
In talking to, it seems like that's the way to go, is to do the sealed bid. The other one, I would really like to do, ask some perks done, and see if we can get a perk, and so we know when it might be worth.
Now, just to go back for a second, historically, we had a building lot on, in the presidential areas, and it came to that question whether or not to do a perk on it. It was a buildable lot, but.
No, it wasn't buildable lot.
But there was another one that was a buildable lot, and we had this whole discussion, because it was, I know it was what the canal was.
I know, and the canal couldn't be part of the lot.
But there was this whole thing, it was a buildable lot, and then we had a discussion about whether or not we actually want to do a perk, or just sell it as a buildable lot, and the perk is up to the person buying the land. That was just a discussion, and Mike, Mike would know that better than I would.
Well, I can tell you, we've done that on, the highway department has done perks with the Board of Health, and it wasn't the Board of Health, they hired a professional sanitarian to come with us. We did three or four lots on Lori, on the backside of Lori. I think we did one on East Street, and we did one years ago, I think, on White Oak.
Because there is a cost to the perk.
Right.
Well, when you hire, I mean, he can witness the perk, he's a sanitarian.
Right.
He's in town payroll, he should be able to do that, and highway department can dig.
So, there would still be a cost to have, because we wouldn't have an attorney here, right? Sell it.
You have to have a witness. The Board of Health usually uses the witness, and then you have a registered sanitarian firm come out and verify it and put it out. Case in point, Heritage Survey does have quite a few of them.
Well, I saw Mark today, because he was checking his mail, so I asked him about it. So, but we do have.
There is a cost associated with that.
Right, I understand that. We do have funds in the tax title account, which I believe we can spend, usually spend an attorney's fees for some tax titles, but we don't have a separate account to spend money for tax possessions, but I think that it's close enough. It was a tax title, now it's a possession, you know, we wouldn't spend a lot, but.
But you're only talking one lot?
I think just one lot.
And the other ones are?
Maybe perkable, and I think that all the other ones are either landlocked or not big enough to be.
Well.
Or not.
I know, if it's a lot, I think it is, it's already been perked by Heritage Survey years ago.
I know, right?
Yes.
Well, they would know that, then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Give me a chance, I'll research that for you and find out if it was.
Okay.
And you might, I don't know who paid for it, but somebody did pay for it, but you'd have to get the permission to release that information.
Did you get some of the?
I'm not sure, because I know that the family of the person, the heirs of Tilton, when we were, when we were foreclosing on it, when it was in Land Court, they are in Florida or somewhere, and they were, you know, they called Heritage Survey, talked to them about having it perked, and like, so that they were going to redeem it, pay it own, which was quite a bit, and then turn around and sell it, thinking that they could make money on it. So, I think Mark Crain already looked into it.
Oh, he did, okay.
But, I mean.
It was the parcel I'm thinking of, it's right near where New England telephone cable comes from.
That's, that's a piece of property I was going to say a while ago.
Yeah.
It goes from.
Well, this one's been in tax title for.
This is, I think what you were telling.
Then, this is not the one.
There's an.
The one adjacent to it.
Goes from middle up to.
In fact, I think there's a.
You got a sketch now?
Because I think the other one that's talking about that's been for sale is two separate lots, and the telephone company goes through, it's a lot of luggage.
Yeah, there's a gate there already with access.
How much would it cost to do that test?
For us?
Yeah.
Just, we own the backhoe, and, you know.
So, not that much?
Not that much. Minimum maybe, you know, half a day with an operator, and then the Board of Health.
And you would get that money back in the sale of the property?
I'm not worried about it, we just make it work.
But there is something about liability, what if the perk now been?
Well, is the town, is the town in receivership of this now, can we go and legally trespass, which I'm assuming they can?
It's not trespassing, because we own it, the deeds are.
Okay, now, what I'm saying is, we have a right to own the property.
Yep. I thought I had the map in here, but. But I don't.
I didn't see any maps on that.
I can look up the legislature's office.
Yeah, well, they're supposed.
Later on this.
So, the action you're looking for us is, have you put in the charge of the receiver for now? Is that the term used?
Well, she should be the.
Custodian.
Custodian.
Of the tax possessions.
Jackie and Liz, you okay with that? Any questions?
Um.
Do you understand what we're doing?
What are the locations, can I, what are the locations of the property?
Um, properties. Mill Road. One top, Walcott Road. I think there's one on Beldert Road. One on Brick Hill.
So, if we go ahead and give you the care of this, when will you be coming back to let us know where we're at? How long will it take to get you posted and perked and ready for sale?
I don't know, I mean.
Sometime in September, do you think?
Maybe. I mean, I, you know, I could, you know, I'd like to do it before the weather gets crappy, so if anyone wants to go out there, they can actually see it, you know, it's my goal is to try and.
I'd like to do it as soon as possible, because there's outstanding tax money that the town can use.
You just might get it back on the tax wells, is what you're really looking to do. Alright, so I want to entertain a motion to proceed.
I make a motion to make Donna Whitley the custodian of the aforementioned properties that we now own.
That's pretty good.
What's the proper term?
Um, the custodian of tax possessions.
Of the tax possessions.
The custodian of the tax possessions.
Second.
Any other discussion? Jackie, you okay?
Yep.
All right, those appear?
Hi.
Alright, thank you. Do you want to schedule a time to come back to talk about that, or just want to?
Why don't I wait and see how it goes at all? I'm not very far, so I'll make sure.
I have a question, on the articles and what you told us last week about the bonding. Can you, is there anything new since you talked to me? Maybe you should refresh the board as a whole, on the status on that and.
I haven't talked to Clark, yeah, he's on vacation, and he said he'd get to me this week, you know.
Clark is a bond counsel?
Clark is our financial advisor.
Okay.
You're talking about Moody's, or?
Yes, yes.
You're talking about Moody's?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I have nothing new to report as far as that goes.
So, basically, our bond rating has been lowered because.
It's been pulled.
It's been.
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
What does that mean?
It means it's very expensive to borrow money.
I guess we'll see what happens. We're going to go out for temporary borrowing first anyway, so I don't, I don't even know for sure what the process is going to be to get Moody's to give us the rating back, you know, what the process is. That's something I need to talk to Clark about, because when I asked the guy I talked to at Moody's, he said he didn't know, it was a different department.
So, what exactly were they, what was the data that they were looking for that they didn't have?
The audit, the fiscal 12 audit. According to Moody's requirements, they need a copy of the fiscal year audit no later than June 30th of the following year, so therefore, the fiscal 12 audit had to be in our possession by June 30th of 2013. And they gave, they put us on review for 30 days until the end of July, when they didn't have it. You know, I talked to Tanya, that's why she came earlier than she was going to from Milan San Didi, trying to finish up, but she still wasn't able to be completely done in time to get it to them before the end of July.
What was, what was, why wasn't she able to complete it?
The fire department issued.
Well, because in, well, on May 6th, I think it was, you guys voted to, agreed to spend up to $5,000 to do the extra, the auditors.
I recall all the fire between, but what was?
But then the auditors didn't get the signed contract until, like, later in June.
So, there's a signed contract from us?
June 19th is when they received it.
June 19th.
So.
So, are they still working on the audit at this time?
Well, I talked to Tanya last week, and she said that she was hoping that as of last week, in a week or two, she could schedule time to meet with us to go over the audit.
She, so is, so has Tanya completed the audit, then?
Well, she was finishing up whatever her, I don't know what's entailed, she had, if the majority of it had been done, she would have followed up on the department invoices and stuff that she wanted to.
Doesn't seem like Tanya should complete this as soon as possible, so we could.
I think it was.
But.
I think she was trying, I mean, they have other obligations, too.
I know, I know, I know. But I mean, maybe, you know, from our standpoint, I recognize other people have other options, but we have to sort of strongly advocate for our, our needs, because.
Well, I don't think, from what I'm guessing, they couldn't start it, they contracted, they had a signed contract for us.
But I just want to get a sense.
And they saw in the paper, you know, that you guys approved it on May 6th.
Regardless of that, but I just want to know, you know, stuff happens, but I want to know, you know, what's holding up Tanya today? Because she, we have a signed contract with her. What's holding her up today to turn it and complete it audit?
I don't know, because she's still, I don't know. I'll just ask her exactly. I mean, I know she was working on it when I talked to her last week.
Who should? From what I understand, the audit, the main audit has been completed. When the extension went out to do the special audit of the fire department, that took more time and additional contract.
Right.
That is what's taking time.
Right.
And I believe that she needed all the departments to supply her with data and information.
But she got, I mean, I know she, she came out, she did one day here, and then I know that Vicki was, you know, emailing her stuff, additional stuff that she needed after she was here that day, but.
Reggie, can you get in touch with this Tanya?
I did, I actually sent it, Mike Phelan asked to send an email to Tanya, and I CC'd all of you, the response that the board was asking for, where are we at, can you get it, can you contact Moody's, and her response, I forwarded it back to you guys.
What did she say? I didn't see.
She's working on it.
So, did, can we actually, again, you know, working on it, ask her when is she going to be done working on it, like, what the completion date is? Find out what that completion date is, and then get in touch with Moody's and say, hey, look, we know we're a month late, but we do have it.
We, I already tried that. We tried that before, as soon as I heard that they were going to pull the rating, I called Clark, our financial advisor, who contacted the man at Moody's, he contacted some other people he knows to try and, you know, they're almost done, can you just give us more time? And they, their response was, their deadline's their deadline, and they don't sway.
So, when did we get her rating again? Not for another year?
I don't know.
So, can you ask, can you get in touch with Moody's, ask them, what is the?
First of all, she deals with Moody.
Well, I just want some answers, that's all.
I mean.
Well, I was just waiting until Clark came back from vacation, because he was on vacation, so that I could talk to him about all this, so I would have to.
Yeah, something formally, I mean, it's something, talking to somebody, but I think, you know, a dated email with a request asking exactly what we're supposed to do, you know, we apologize for the delay, but there were some internal audits that needed to be done because of malfeasance, and that we're behind, and we understand that, but we do want to be, you know, upfront and get this done, to get our rating back, because I think it's going to be very important for the town, especially if we're talking about doing a buy, if we're talking about buying the rail trail and stuff, I hate to have something like this.
And the rail trail, the roof.
The roof or anything else, so I think it's imperative to get this sort of nailed down and.
Well, I think if we had had a fiscal 11 audit done.
I don't care about what happened in the past.
Well, no, but I'm saying, I think it's important that we need to be doing annual audits.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we're not required to by law, but if we want to have a good Moody's rating, and we want a.
It's not often, yeah, it's not often, Donna, that we actually borrow money, it's just, but this happens to be the year we're going to borrow some money.
Yeah, but you know, we're looking at doing a public safety complex.
Right.
And, you know, if that happens, we can't say the year we're deciding to vote on it, oh gee, I wish I did an audit the last two years.
And I get that, but what I want to move is forward, and find out how we sort of rectify the situation we're in, so we can deal with the situations that are coming down like the roof, like the public safety. Doesn't put everything off for a year, because we can't get a bond rating. I mean, that's, because I haven't heard yet that someone says, no, we don't have to wait a year. No one said that.
Because I don't know for sure, so I'm not going to say.
Exactly, so if it's going to be a year, wait, then that's really sort of slowing things down that we need.
It doesn't mean that we're not going to be able to borrow money, you know, I mean.
You just pay for more, you just pay a higher rate.
If you read the report that they published, you know, it did say, you know, we provided them with all the financials that we gave the auditors, they just weren't audited by a third party, so they wouldn't accept it. But they didn't say that anything looked, you know, right or anything, didn't look like it had been, or, you know what I mean? But it's their policy that they need the audit.
Yeah, it's, it's, the way I look at it is, you know, the people doing the audit, it really is, they're just doing their job, they're doing their audit, there may not be as much fire under them to get it done.
Oh, I play just plenty of fire, I, they know the urgency of this.
Right, but when they.
But she doesn't have a real date that Tanya's going to come back and hand it to her, I mean, if.
Well, who does? The work's not finished, Dave.
But that's what I want to know. I want to make sure that Tanya has everything she needs, and when she's going to have it.
Right, I guess, you know, I guess you have to look at it from, you know, they, they got the signed contract back on June 19th, right? We got the notice on June 27th or something, that they were putting us on, you know, a 30-day review from Moody's, and that they were going to pull our rating, and.
I get all that, but I just say, where is Tanya, and when is she going to be done?
But if she's already committed to, you know, working on other, it's not like they just work on Southampton, you know, she had to finish all of that.
And I get that, and what I'm trying to say is, make sure the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and we need to be squeaky, and make sure Tanya doesn't.
I know, Vicki's not contacted her, I've contacted her, Reggie's contacted her, so I think that they know that we're.
I believe one of Reggie's notes even said, there's, there's a meeting imminent coming.
I asked her, is it going to be scheduled?
And she explained that in an email, that that's this week or next weekend that she's talking about, or it sounded like it was imminent.
Did she give you a date, exact date? No, that's the problem, that, I mean, I don't have an exact date.
So, can we put on, I don't know how this works, put on the agenda for next week? We need to revisit this next week, so that we don't, I don't think anybody's going to forget about it, but.
No, it should be an outstanding.
But could we put it on the agenda, so that we are revisiting every week until we're?
Let's have an action plan, let's get a date from Tanya, just that's all. When's it going to be done? That's not a hard question.
If you're recommending that we have an audit every year, what, at what point in this fiscal year do we start the audit process again?
Well, I think that we should get it scheduled, you know, for February of next year, you know.
What money, with what money?
That's a problem.
Is there money in the budget this year? No?
They cut it.
So, some, there's like $5,000, right?
And how much does an audit cost?
Um, was it 13?
14.
But, it's possible, when I talked with Clark, that we might be able to, well, I talked to John Martin about it, and he said, if we need to have an audit, then we need to have an audit, and we'll get the money, you know what I mean, like, if that's something that we need to do. It's possible that that's a cost, say, the $8,000 or $9,000, the difference between what we have and what we need for fiscal 13, might be able to be rolled into the bonding cost, because, as a cost for projects, you know, because we need to have that done. That's something that Clark had mentioned, if we need to do, I mean, you know, you don't want to roll in more than you need to, just like when you finance a house or car, you know, but we could possibly do that, too.
What about having Tanya be here next week?
Dave, the cost, you know, if she's incomplete, and she doesn't have it, is one thing, but to have her come in here when it's not complete, what is that going to solve?
One more week isn't going to, I mean.
I just don't want to give an email from Tanya, like, oh, by the way, I'm still waiting for this form, or this data, I don't have this, and it's September.
She's not waiting for anything.
Before, before she even finalizes the audit report, she has to meet with all the departments, so that we put our response into the management letter, so that's what Ed was talking about.
She, yeah, they come and meet with us, and we discuss all the points, and give our responses, and then that goes into the.
So, she's just waiting to sit at a table with all the documents?
No.
Hang on, Ed, please. She's waiting to sit at a table, she has all the information from us to go through the audit, then meet with the department head to do the management letter. She's not sitting at her table, missing a document that we don't know about?
Uh-uh, no.
Okay. Because it's, you know, how it goes.
She's getting everything ready to sit at the table with all of us, with the management letter.
And that takes time.
She's got to prepare, I mean, she's got to prepare the findings that we have to have a response to.
And like, I'm sorry to interrupt, and like Donna was saying, we're not the only community that they work with, they have been scheduled.
This is the only community I care about.
I know, but.
Well, I think that, you know, looking forward, that we should get, you know, I guess we can figure out how we're going to pay for it as the year goes on, but we know we need to do it, so let's try and get on that schedule.
Well, the contract ends, so you have to rebid it. But their contract with us ends, you would have to rebid it, correct?
Well, I don't know. It's professional services, so how, I don't know what the procurement law is for.
Professional services, they can be negotiated. Doctors, lawyers, engineers.
It would make sense, since they've been doing it for so many years, in a way, to not have somebody you command, you know, but that's up to you guys, I don't know. I'm sure if we bid on it again, if that's the way you don't get.
Donna, I think you got my side on it, I just, I just don't want to hear from somebody saying that Tanya's still waiting for some sort of, that could be the problem.
I don't know.
Because you, we don't know that, because we don't know for certain that she's.
I know that Vicki has supplied her, you know, right away with everything that she's asked for, she's, because she knew it was top priority to try and get that done, so I know she's been responsive.
So, where do we go from now? What's next with the audit?
I'm going to contact Tanya and ask for a date, and keep it on the agenda as requested, and.
Anything else, Donna?
No.
Thank you. Do you have a question, sir?
Ed, Donna, can I answer a specific question about a piece of property that some might go forward? That thing is behind for taxes? I've got a piece of pro, uh, you know, just ask me, can I ask a couple of questions?
No, you're all right.
There's a house up on White Oak, I think it owed the town $18,000, that was a few as a few years ago. It's unoccupied, or it's occupied, you know, off and on. It's probably back in about sixty, sixty-five White Loaf, and I guess it's just come up the crest of the hill.
Oh, on the left, that brown house?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's...
That's all taken care of.
Oh, yeah, because it's, it's sold.
Oh, it's sold?
Yes. Oh, that's sold a few years ago.
Actually, the bank owns it, doesn't it?
No, the bank sold it, though.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, so the gentleman lives there.
Oh, okay.
And, because I've seen him out there, he maintains it.
Well, I see somebody there off and on, so I don't know if he's living there or what. I just have a question.
No, he lives there, because I go out there a bit, too, but, no, the taxes are current, though.
Really?
Yeah, so the bank foreclosed on it from the original owner there, and then the bank turned around and sold it to this guy, and, and he's...
Yeah, I see somebody working here on the park, but I thought that was the bank or, you know, last season. You know, last time I looked at this, it's not, they owe the town eighteen grand, somewhere in that vicinity.
That was on pay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Right, thank you. All right, so what do we have next here? Warrants? Is it bill warrants?
Yeah, bill warrants.
So we have bill warrant fourteen dash six, in the amount of one million seven hundred ninety thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Oh, a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. And bill warrant fourteen dash six A, in the amount of two thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars and eight cents.
Oh, a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
And there's some PCFs from the fire department.
Do I just have to read the names?
Um, yeah, I think what we usually do is just read the names and whether or not it's a change.
So we have a PCF for John Ferrero.
For ENT, ENT firefighter.
One and two. And we have a PCF for Ralph Morton.
Which is a separation, so he's no longer working with us.
The first one's a new hiring, right?
So checked off his name?
Yes. And then one for Tammy Colita, a resignation. And one for Lindsay Peterson, which is a resignation.
Make a motion for all.
I make a motion to accept the PCFs as written.
Is that a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
We have a one-day alcohol...
So do you have to sign the bottom of that?
Yeah, thank you.
And then we have a one-day alcohol permit for Conant Park.
There's a whole harmless there on the check?
And a check number.
You got the, the check? It's the bottom, okay. Do you have a, a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
And Pioneer Valley Planning Commission discharge of lien to be signed in front of a notary. Is, um, is Eileen still here?
Mm-hmm.
Is the brother? Thank you.
Dave, we don't have to sign this, right?
It's a, uh, release.
Hi.
We had a lien something that we needed from us.
We have, yeah, probably in the town, Jones.
But they don't tell you where.
It should be in the back. Mary, me, God, Wendy.
They're figuring it out.
Good evening, Eileen.
Good evening.
So a discharge of lien of a real estate on Westville Road in Granville. Is this part of that program, Ed?
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion to sign?
Make a motion to sign the Pioneer Valley Planning release of a lien for the property in Granville.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
So do I sign here or there? I sign here, right?
Here's a chair, laying up here.
Okay, black ink, blue ink, doesn't matter.
She's in black.
There's a six.
She's signature, print your name and your title.
My handwriting gets worse by the end of the day.
The only one.
Did you assume my license?
I got you in my book.
Thank you. All right, open time for the public? I already have my share. Anything else anybody wants to talk about that's on the agenda?
Anybody know anything about where we are with the fire chief's position?
Donna would know. They're, they're planning, from what I understand, to get down to three candidates.
I know, we know that, but where are they, you know?
Donna?
End of August, is that the last I heard?
End of August? And the town administrator candidate's gonna be here next week?
Check negotiations.
And the background check is done?
No, ninety-four percent.
What's the other six percent?
It's outstanding.
It's the last personal reference and the one more item from the courts, the criminal and felony background.
So is it, is it the same as last week, or it got better than last week?
It got better. One, one item was completed, so we have two more items that we're waiting.
Remind me not to hire this outfit to do this again, because it takes so long. And in the meantime, we're supposed to go out and do some interviews. You must be doing that, so...
Welcome.
Okay. When you wanna do it?
We'll talk.
Oh, I gotta schedule, too, so...
I gotta schedule as well. All right, young ladies over there, do you have any issues?
I'm just curious as to, um, the highway superintendent's job description and posting. Ed, did we ever talk about how we were gonna divide that up, that this are gonna be one position? I mean, how did that all pan out?
It's one position.
Right. So, when did you say you're gonna retire?
Uh, I haven't officially given you an notice, but, uh, beginning of November, I'm retiring.
I'm confused. I thought it was, like, the first time you said it was July.
I said I would probably stop working in the July and use my vacation to the end of October.
Right.
That's what I said. And then I told you I'm gonna extend it two more months and I'll work, uh, I'd say into November.
Into November, okay. So I'm just curious, um, should we, because while you're here, I would think that you, you know, you have a big job, you have to maybe help train somebody, rather than all of a sudden. I mean, when are we gonna, like, actually post it, or how does that kinda work?
Well, I thought we would have a town minister at this point, and, uh, have his input, but it doesn't look like that he's gonna be here in a timely fashion.
Yeah.
It definitely looks like the fire chief's gonna be here in a timely fashion either. You know, if it's, if it's just gonna be this pace for highway super, he probably will be coming in sometime.
After winter.
Maybe after the winter, and you need him before the winter.
Right.
Uh, you need, you know, the ideal thing was to have him cross-trained, um, with me for a couple of months. Um, I don't know what to tell you, Jackie. Um, I've given you plenty of notice that I was leaving, and we'd done the job description. It was never, never intended to be broken up to two or three people.
Right, I know, we had discussed it.
Why did you think that? I never heard you say that. Well, why were you thinking that, just out of curiosity? Because I, I don't really recall that, but...
Yeah. No, I thought that we had talked about, you know, maybe dividing it up, because you're doing so many different things, I would think that...
We were actually talking about doing it the other way, because several years ago, we tried to make it into Public Works, because that's what it is. The highway super, through Ed, what he does with all the bringing everybody together, gets the system to work, and it should be at Public Works, because highway department doesn't do the cemetery in most towns. Highway department doesn't take care of the parks and everything else, not that I'm aware of.
Yes, they do.
They do.
Well, I mean, to an extent, when you're, you have a physical, uh, department, a department of Public Works, you have divisions under it.
But we're, we're functioning as a Public Works, even though we tried to get that to pass at annual town meeting, and discussion broke down to the fact that the water commissioners were voted entity, they were voted to position, and there, people were saying, "You're taking away our vote."
Daniel said that.
Well, Pat Monahan said that.
Well, it was Pat, he's not a water commissioner.
No, no, I didn't say a lot, that was at town meeting, that was what the issue was, that we were taking away their choice. Because what we're gonna do is we're just gonna appoint the water commissioners, they're gonna be voted, and just be under the TPH, to make it easier so its functions better.
Let me just clarify, since you're using the water commissioner, the water commissioner was voted in nineteen thirty-three. They have sole authority over the water division, and that's how the town voters put it, and that wasn't going to change. They, um, they are policy board and, um, and they review projects. It really wouldn't interfere with how, um, how it would formulate into the operation, because we went through this whole thing. If you remember, we talked to the parks commission about their, their duties. We talked to the DPW commission, we talked to the board of health about their duties in the, in the transfer station with the board of selectmen. We talked about the board, the planning board, where I'm involved with them on all their projects. It's, uh, the highway department is running as a DPW, but when it was decided on to go forward with a town vote, all these boards were talking to, and, um, we had them in here two or three times to discuss authority and how that would break down, and we had that all prepared when we had those meetings. Uh, there was no boards losing their authority.
And that was perception at town meeting?
You know, no boards were losing their authority, because I report to all these boards. I still do.
Right.
You know, so...
So instead of breaking his job down, what we should be doing is consolidating what he actually does under appropriate title. Because you don't want people fracturing, you know, fracturing. He saves money by having a backhoe that goes, talking about the water department, the backhoe is paid for, was used, some of the fund money from the water department.
It's paid for fifty-fifty.
And it's what, it saves costs for the town, so it's like the water department buys its own backhoe, because they wanna be independent of the water commissioners. So Ed was able to pull together all those different divisions under one roof as a, as a quasi-DPW and save the town money and get the job done. So, you know, sometimes, first of all, Ed's a friend of mine, but sometimes Ed can be polarizing, and sometimes people go after the man and not the position. And, um, the position Ed's been able to pull together has brought a great, great benefit to the town. Ed himself has. And there are people out there that sort of target him, but miss the whole point of what he's been able to do in his position as a highway super to get it to function like a Public Works department.
Right.
I personally don't think it's that gonna be that hard of a job to do with the right person. You need to have the ability to be willing to do this versus being obstinate to doing this. So you need a willing individual to do this, and, um, think about the future of the town, that eventually it will be DPW, but the town, the town is growing leaps and bounds, but you need an individual in there where everything comes to, to facilitate equipment, manpower, resources, and revenue. And, uh, you, you divide that up, I think it's gonna cause a problem, but it's the vote of the town. Not that it's a vote out there, but I do believe one person can handle this job. Uh, he might need, um, additional personnel, because we still need a mechanic, uh, which has been a major problem, and we're still short a man, besides the mechanic, um, through cuts. And, uh, we get our job done. Uh, I think we get our job done in a very high-quality amount of work. And when people need our help for special projects like the school, or, or, um, the board of health, or even this building here, yeah, you work it in, you make it happen.
Right. So given the fact that we know that you're leaving, what do we need to do to get the ball rolling here? When do we post, how do we post it? What do we need to do? What are the next steps, so that we're not waiting until November to say, "Oh, by the way, half of the time..."
Well, I was hoping, this is, discussion came up a couple of weeks ago, and I said, "Sounds like we're gonna administer it," so now it doesn't seem like that. We need to, um, we have a job description. I believe we approved it. As far as I know, we approved it. I don't know if you were here.
Reggie, what did you... No, we, we, there was a job description, Ed redrafted it, and I took Ed's copy that he redrafted. I submitted it to the board, but they, you guys did not review it yet.
We reviewed it.
No.
Yes, we have.
Not the, not the one that, not your original one, not the one from MRI, and not the one that you did.
Okay. I'm almost positive I did, but...
But I submitted that to, Ed, right, I submitted that to you guys for approval on the, for the posting, and Ed had said that we're not working on this because you did not submit a letter yet. And without a letter, we can't post it, is what you had said.
Well, I know, well, I said I would prefer to have the town administrator here to be part of this decision process, but that was six months ago.
It's getting there, I mean, we'll talk to...
Yeah, it's getting there, all right.
We'll talk to him next week.
But, um, my feeling is, you should take the copy, review it, especially you. I think Jackie's reviewed it and everybody else has. Look at it, and let's talk about it, and then if it's gonna, if this radar that we don't know when people are coming in is, is not getting any better than what I anticipate, we, we better put it out there.
I would just like to state, I don't like to have the whole thing pulled apart and dissected. I don't think that's appropriate. I think Ed's demonstrated that, the way he does and his functions in the town. You know, it ruffles the feathers of some people who don't like, like Ed, but I think when you overlook the budgetary...
Don't, you're emphasizing something that's...
Well, I just wanna say, I mean...
Let's just look at what the job description is and talk about it, and then go from there. And let's review it, and then, you know.
I just have one, when you guys are looking at it, what would Ed's recommendation, would you prefer the person to live in town or not? What would you recommend, you know, when you're reviewing the job description at that point in time?
It's always best to have him in town, but, you know, the main limit to people who would apply for the position.
Well, it's like people living in, say, Chickaby or West Springfield, they move here, it's a, anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar jump in living, uh, the cost of living. And a lot of these guys, if you're looking for a hard worker, he's, he's working hard every day as, uh, in this field, maybe as a foreman, or maybe as a deputy director. And I know there's several people that approached me and have called me at the office about this job position. There are a lot of good candidates out there. Their style might be different. My style is one-way, and you're gonna anticipate it's gonna be a different style, but he should be at least versed on, on how things operate and why they operate that way, so he can make his own judgment once, once he's established his position. But my goal was to stay with him for a few months, and I believe, uh, you, Dave, and Mike wanted me accessible if he's needed, and I said, "Fine," but, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna be free. And I'm not plowing snow, and I'm not, and I'm not running jobs unless it's a technical thing.
So just, just to pause on that, there is no residency requirement for the fire chief, there's no residency requirement for the...
There's a five-mile radius for the fire chief.
Well, there's no residency requirement for the police chief, there's no residency requirement for the town minister.
It's different.
What I'm just saying, Jeff, I'm different. The police department is, is...
It is different, Dave.
It's been shut down, you're working nine-hour day, and somebody's gonna be on call twenty-four-seven. Ed, all I'm saying is, you know, that, you know, some of the other people are not, so yes, you are different, and I agree with that.
Not me, MC.
The position.
The events happen around the clock.
So maybe there needs to be a radius requirement with this position?
I'm not sure.
Because you made a limit.
I'm not sure. Um, you might wanna, you might wanna say you'd like to see him within a radius of five or six miles of the office in a one-year period, within a year, year or two.
Okay.
Uh, to say you want it today, but you gotta give some options, some flexibility there, because you're gonna have some good candidates, I really do. I think you're gonna have some good candidates.
But that could be contracted, George.
And there're gonna be a lot, a lot of them aren't gonna be from Public Works to Public Works, to try to see, you know?
I don't think you can do contract, Dave. I'm talking like town council.
Just, so I think you...
Civil towns have contracts, I can tell you that again.
So I think you wanna cast a wide net, and I think by saying you have to be in two miles and a really good candidate, three and a half miles, I think, or five miles and someone's two and a half miles, you shoot yourself in the foot. I think residency requirement would be looked at in the contract negotiations, after you've catched as many people, you can try to get the most qualified person there.
One thing I found, having personnel out of town when we have an event, it takes them, they might be only two miles over the border, but it might take them three hours to get here when we need them.
It's not a perfect, but you wanna try to...
It's not a perfect world, but I'm just saying, I don't think we can, um...
Because the chances of, that the crises could happen...
Institution, uh, a, a resident requirement, I don't think is a good idea. I think a radius is a better idea for flexibility.
Because the, the crises happen not as frequently as the good management happens. You want someone's a good manager, which is the day-to-day, you know, eight to five, normal day procedure that keeps everything running, and then you have a crisis, and if you have deputies that are in town, or that can be delegated till the super gets, that's fine, but I think, you know, a radius may sort of limit the great, you know, manager that you might wanna get into that position.
Fair enough. So, have them next week.
I'm sorry, I was going to, can, um, so if we, I'm not sure of Jackie, if you are going there, so if Ed's looking at November, and it takes thirty days for posting, what we've, past practice, we've always posted for thirty days, and then are, is the board considering a screening committee of some sort, and that's another time, so that's going to bring you back into November.
Right.
So is that, you know, is he going to stay longer, you know, what? We're coming, excuse me, we're coming into winter, we're coming into plowing season by that time, so.
If that's your plan, is it reasonable to ask for a letter, that that's your plan?
I, I know, I only need two weeks. But I was planning on doing it, you know, a little longer period, if this thing's changed.
But it's not a lot that we have a letter before we post a position?
No, no.
Okay.
If that was, if that was a misunderstanding, my part, then I'm sorry, I, I didn't-
Is Mike going to be here next Tuesday?
No, he won't be here till the twentieth.
Well, why don't we just, you know, have, make sure we have that on agenda, more discussion regarding that.
In the meantime, I'll send everybody.
Any other questions, Jeff?
No, thank you.
Edward?
Yeah.
All right, Eileen, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Hi, Eileen, you want to speak?
No.
Okay. Is it boring in here?
Well, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. See you next Tuesday. Good night.